Good evening, and I'd like to call our August 6, 2019, Pickwa City Commission meeting to order. Let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have our roll call, please? Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
Mayor Hines?
Here.
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Vogt is absent this evening.
I move we excuse Bill from the meeting tonight.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to excuse Commissioner Vogt from the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Commissioner Vogt has been excused. The first thing on our docket is an oath of office for our new Fourth Ward Commissioner, Chris Grissom. I'd ask that you join me down at the podium, please. And I know you have some wonderful family here to observe it, young and old this day. We are thrilled to have you here on the Pickwa City Commission. So please repeat after me, raising your right hand. I, Chris Grissom.
I, Chris Grissom.
solemnly swear or affirm, either one.
solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
obey the Constitution.
obey the Constitution.
and the laws of the United States.
and the laws of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and the state of Ohio.
that I will.
that I will.
in all respects.
in all respects.
observe the provisions.
observe the provisions.
of the charter.
of the charter.
and ordinances.
and ordinances.
of the city of Pickwa.
of the city of Pickwa.
and faithfully discharge.
and faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office.
the duties of the office.
of city commissioner.
of city commissioner.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think your son was coming up. I'm happy to have Commissioner Grissom's family here today. The next thing on our docket are any announcements. Do we have any announcements this evening?
I have a couple announcements I'd like to make, and I'll make it very short. I'd like to, this is, about 27, 30 years ago, my first food service inspection was done by Amy, and I believe it might have been her first one. And so it was at the old Moe's Building, which you own now. It's just sort of amazing how things come around. And so what I'm up here tonight to talk about is announcing is that, this is called the Flavor Bible. And I got that at the CIA, which is the Culinary Institute of America. It's on the Hudson Valley, and it is the Harvard of culinary schools. And so I went there 30 years ago. It was my first time, and I occasionally go back, and I would highly, it's one of the greatest places in the world, and you know, you can stay there and, on campus, and they have several different restaurants that you can, students will serve you. Then you can jump on a train and go right down Manhattan, about an hour's ride, and you can experience some of the greatest food in the world. And then you'll understand where all these great chefs come from, and that's what the CIA, the Culinary Institute of America, does. They crank these kids out, and that's what they do. This is a book called Escafier, and he is known as the, he's the father of American cuisine. He's French, and the word restaurant, he really coined that, and, well, he didn't coin that, but he perfected that, and our whole restaurant system now is, today, is built on what they call the Brigade System. And so, now, the reason I'm bringing this up to you is because I don't think Pickwa really knows what they have coming. And so I'm just going to really quickly tell you is that, is that the way it works, I, by trade, by definition, I'm an executive chef. And whether I like that definition or not, it's by what I do. So you can't, you know, there's just no way for me to get around it. I am an executive chef by definition. And Sinclair has not, they asked if I would be on their culinary advisory board. If the position was offered, would I accept it? And I haven't answered them yet, and I'm not sure that they will offer it, but I think I have a level, a certain level of expertise in food service that would warrant you guys paying attention to me. So what I'm here to talk to you tonight about is the fact that what Pickwa's going to get here in the next 15 or 20 days, now, in the, there's the American Culinary Federation is like the American Bar Association. It is the standard, it's set for all the culinary people in the United States. And so I am an executive chef by definition. Now, I'm not certified, and so that certification process is a whole nother level. When you watch on TV these guys, you know, what they go through to get the certification is just amazing. And then you'll understand what a chef does in a kitchen, and just what they get paid for, and the level of expertise they have. And so what I'm here to announce to you guys tonight is that what Pickwa has come is two of the greatest chefs probably have ever come around here at all. And Chef Todd is just excellent, and he has the credentials. He is an executive chef, he is certified, and for anybody not to acknowledge his credentials would be crazy. The second one is the Springs. And that guy is, he has the credentials, he has credentials that are even higher than Chef Todd's. And this guy has an amazing, Adam Lang is named Chef Adam Lang, and he is, his credentials are way up here, and he is the one breaking, getting the Springs ready to open up. So I just think, I hope Pickwa appreciates what they're getting. We're going to get two of the finest restaurant opportunities ever to hit this town. It might be a one-shot deal. So I'm just hoping the people of Pickwa come out and support them. I've seen it in the past, they don't, they, we want a restaurant, we want a restaurant, you open one up, and they don't support it. And I just hope that doesn't happen again, because this is a watershed moment in Pickwa's history to have two restaurants of that caliber open up at the same time. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question? Chef Todd is the, you're talking about lock tenders and the, well, it's going to be called lock tenders here.
Right, yeah. He has some impeccable credentials.
Okay, okay, both of them, okay. I just wanted to make sure people knew which, who you were talking about. So lock tenders and the new grill that's, I think it's River Rock Grill is the name of where the Springs is. I think that's what I've heard. Okay, thank you very much. Any other announcements?
I have announcement. Jeff Lang, 9586 North State Route 66. Announcement of my sincere appreciation to the main sponsor Cargill and all the major sponsors of the 2019 Clean Sweep of the Great Miami River. But I would like to point out the 43 local establishments, businesses, community foundations, and governments that also help us out. That would be the city of Pickwa, Chief of Police, Mr. Brookhart right there, thank you guys very much. Also, the fire chief for watching out over us. Jackson Tube Service, Hartzell Propeller, Pickwa Rotary Club, Pickwa Steel, Andy's Garden, Miami County Foundation, Barrett Paving and Materials, the Rich Donnelly Foundation, Scott Family McDonald's, Rally's, Subway at Walmart, Dobos Delights, Unity National Bank, Pickwa Community Foundation, Direct Digital Media, Swift Run Farm, City of Sydney, Community Foundation of Shelby County, French Oil Mill Machinery Company, Miami Valley Steel, the Windleland Family, American Honda Motor Company of Troy, Down a River, Down a Beer, Subway at Sunset, Lee's Chicken, Tecumseh Woods Swim Club, Bepo Uno's, Pizza Hut, Domino's, Tim Johnson Family, the Neils Lundgaard Foundation, Hartzell Norris Foundation, Crayex, the Hideout Tavern, East of Chicago Papa John's Salon Marche Des Spas, Loyal Davis Family, the Denny Steinke Family, and the Rich Patton Family. 100 volunteers descended upon the Great Miami River on July 20. Our own mayor was there helping us run food, thank you very much. And it was a great success. Just shy of 100 people pulled out 5,120 pounds of trash out of the river, including 37 tires. That is a record-low amount for the sweep of the Great Miami River for the Powell Section from South Sydney to South Pickwa. Other sections, their numbers aren't compiled yet, but I'm anxiously awaiting by the scales what our numbers are, because I want to know what the numbers are, so we can tell our sponsors that we're doing a better job than we did last year. But one thing that this really points out is that our community is doing better. We are not throwing our trash in the river. Sydney's doing better, Shelby County's doing better, North Miami County's doing better. We're finding less trash in the Pickwa Hydralisk Canal, in France Pond, in Echo Lake, in Swift Run Lake. We do an annual spring sweep there every year, and a fall sweep there every year. So we are making progress. That record low this year is 15% below our previous record low, which was last year. So we're going in the right directions. But all these great organizations, tremendous help, I appreciate everything they do, but it's the volunteers. It's the people that get out there and are out in that hot sun, getting in and out of that canoe, handling some dangerous items with gloves on and trying to be careful, and we take every precaution we can to make sure everybody's safe, and they get this done year after year after year. And my hat's off to all those individuals for all their help, because I cannot do it without them. Two stellar stories that I thought were phenomenal is if you're familiar with the I-75 Bridge Overpass in South Shelby County at Miami River Road, in the Great Miami River. After the construction of the third lane going north and south on the I-75 Bridge was done, a lot of construction was done underneath at Miami River Road, including fresh paint on the pillars that hold up that bridge deck. Unfortunately, local people got in there and started spray painting graffiti all over the fresh paint of the buttments, and on both sides of the river. So my hat's off to Dave, the store manager at Walmart in Pickwa, who donated paint, rollers, extension poles, paint pans. And my sons coming home by surprise from Denver, we knocked out covering 800 square feet of graffiti with two gallons of paint. So Dave and Walmart, thank you. And on another stellar story, Barrett Paving and Materials, Mr. Jim Meckstroth, Vice President of Mobile Equipment for their Southwest Division, was told by myself that there are some dangerous ruts on that bridge buttment underneath Miami River Road there, right beside Miami River Road. I was worried about people falling in those dangerous ruts. And sure enough, the local quarry down the road came by with dump trucks, a Crush and Run, and a big Caterpillar 992, and filled the rut holes and leveled it all out, so everybody had safe passage to get to the dumpsters, unload the canoe, and eat their lunch. And those kind of supports from those kind of companies and businesses make this an easier job every year. Now the river's prettier down there, and less trash, and also, it's prettier scenery. So thank you to the city of Pickwa, all of you up here, for all your help you do watching out over us, and a special thanks to all those volunteers. Thank you.
Jeff, was this 21?
This was 16.
16, I knew that, okay.
Yes.
I knew it was 15 or 20 last year, okay.
So that put our total up over 188,000 pounds and over 1,800 tires.
I just want to say on behalf of the city, thank you for organizing this and doing so for the past 15-plus years, and all those volunteers I know being out there, and know some of the things that people pull out of the river, which people would not believe, full TVs, blenders, different things like that. I mean, it is pretty amazing what we find in the river, so thank you.
Unusual finds this year were a four-foot-tall plastic black bear that was used by archers for target practice, a 600-gallon aluminum skid-caged bulketeer, plastic bulketeer tank. It was so big, the lady couldn't get in her canoe, so she walked the bulketeer down the river for a mile to get that out.
Wow.
So a lot of individual efforts went into it, and I thank them all. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you. Any other announcements this evening? If not, we will move to the next thing on our agenda, which is our Resident Pride Awards. We have five of those this evening, and I will read those off, and we will see the pictures on our screen. The first one, do we have any of our winners here tonight? Okay. The first one is Brittany and Nicholas Brown, and that address is 618 West Ash Street. And the next one is Tina and Mark Doughty at 10, well, actually, Tina and Mark Doughty at 1040 Broadway Street. And then the next one is Brenda and Richard Rhodes at 1407 Garfield Street. And the next one is Connie and Dennis Dowell at 410 Staunton Street. And then finally, Beth Kazer and Sue Teach at 520 North Wayne Street. We thank all of these citizens for doing great work in the community, for fixing up their homes, and encouraging the rest of us to do the same. Again, if you notice somebody in the community who you think deserves a Resident Pride Award, you can contact the city manager's office and share that address with them. But we do give thanks for citizens as they fix up their property, and again, encourage the rest of us to do the same. Congratulations to all of our Resident Pride winners this summer. So now we will move on to our regular Pickwa City Commission meeting, and the first thing on our agenda here is our consent agenda.
There's one item on the agenda, consent agenda, it's the approval of the minutes from the July 16, 2019, regular city commission meeting.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's try that again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda passes. And now we move to our new business. The first is Resolution Number R-63-19.
A resolution establishing trick-or-treat beggars' night in the city of Pickwa.
Annually, the Miami County Council establishes the trick-or-treat beggars' night throughout Miami County for all jurisdictions to adopt. This year, they have selected Thursday, October 31, 2019, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. as the designated night for trick-or-treating and beggars' night.
Okay. And am I remembering correctly that we have a representative on that council?
We do.
It's Commissioner Martin, that's what I thought. Yeah. So we do have somebody from our commission that sits on that council every year to make that decision. So do we have any discussion or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-64-19.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Cargill Incorporated for the purchase of road salt for the street department.
Mr. Brookhart will provide the staff report.
Yes, we belong to an organization named Southwest Ohio Purchasers for Government, which bid out the road salt purchase on behalf of approximately 83 entities this year. The city of Pickwa has participated in this joint bid successfully for many years. This year, our price for salt will be $89.69 per ton, which was the same as what we purchased salt for last year. The bid result summary is marked in Exhibit A, you'll find in your packet. We estimated our usage at 2,000 tons for the bid. We are not required to purchase a certain amount, but if we would have to purchase 2,000 tons during the season, it would cost us $179,380. Just for your information, last year, we used approximately 1,500 tons.
Okay.
And our salt barn is currently full.
And so obviously, by bidding this with other communities, we're able to keep the price low.
Correct, yes.
And looking at this, the Cargill one came in obviously noticeably lower than most of the other ones, for every community that was part of that.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, what happens if we go over 2,000 tons?
If we go over 2,000 tons, we can purchase more than that. That is just a guaranteed amount that they have to have on hand for us. They ask every municipality, what do you approximately use for the season? Because they don't want to have 5,000 tons of extra salt sitting all season long that's not going to go out to us. So we all estimate our usage. If we would potentially go over, we can go back to them and ask for more if we wouldn't need it.
What we would do in, it's considered an emergency situation, is go out and ask for more bids.
Oh, and ask for more bids? We couldn't get it at the same price?
Well, if they're willing, but if they're not, then we have to go out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or more questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt Resolution R-64-19.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-65-19.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Lebanon Ford for the purchase of a Ford F-450 cab and chassis.
Mr. Johnson will provide the staff report.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, we're asking for the approval of this Ford F-450. The cab and chassis is necessary, the size of the truck is necessary due to the service body that's going to be mounted on it. The actual, the service body will be, would be a crane. There's a 4,000-pound-capacity crane that'll be on it. It's, the truck was a state bid item, although the truck was also put out for competitive pricing, and Lebanon Ford won that, that bid. The base truck, the base price is, was $30,998, but with the add-ons, which are in one of the exhibits, with the PTO, the backup alarm, and we had to move the, we have to request to have the axle moved back to accommodate the, the actual service body, so, and that's pretty much it.
So we have to have a specific truck in order to handle this crane, correct?
That's correct. That's correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
Yeah, would there be advantage to having a crew cab? Do you ever have that many people need to go out in one shot?
Typically, you know, when we go out and do jobs, you know, we've got multiple vehicles anyway, so a crew cab is not typically accommodating. Because, you know, we go out to do an excavation, you know, we, we have a hydro excavator, we would have this truck, and we would have a truck that we would use to run parts and or what have you. You know, so, crew cabs, we don't usually buy, it's all standard cabs.
Okay.
And just looking at this bid, that would put it about 3,000, a little more than $3,000 more if we got the crew cab. Am I reading that correctly? I think that's right, just looking at the...
I didn't, no, I didn't, the, the crew cab was not.
Was not even, yeah, I'm just looking at, it'd be obviously more money if we did that, so...
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If you have a question, you need to come up, sorry. And again, state your name and your address, just so we have that for the record, so...
Yeah.
Kevin Jenkins, 619 North Downing Street. What's this truck being used for, and is it needed?
Yes, it is needed. Currently, the employees have to lift tremendous weighted pumps, and this will enable them to be able to lift pumps without having three or four employees there to manhandle the pump and run into safety issues. So yes, very much needed from a safety standpoint, too.
All right, thanks.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments from the public? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of Resolution Number R-65-19 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-66-19.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Ace Truck Body, Inc. for the purchase of a crane body.
This accompanies item number four, and Mr. Johnson will provide the staff report.
Yeah, this, this purchase is actually part two of this. Being that this is a specialized truck, we're asking that this is approved through Ace Truck Body. The, again, this was the, Ace Truck Body was the lowest bidder, and, you know, the service body comes with an equipped crane, it's got a 4,000-pound capacity, mounted on the passenger side of the truck. Some of the operations that we would include to have a crane like this would typically be picking up heavy materials, as Mr. Huff said, that would normally take multiple employees, couple of points is lifting manhole castings, we would hoist fire hydrants to put those in place, and large dewatering pumps, as Gary said. And a couple other notes that we could use the truck for is assisting wastewater. We have numerous lift stations throughout the city, and one of the things that they've got to do is go in and actually pull those pumps out of the lift stations and do maintenance on it, clean them. So this truck would come in handy for that. And then also, the water department, we, every once in a while, we have to pick the, either the motors or the pumps, out of the pump stations for the, the pump stations that fills the water towers. The truck would come in handy for that, so it's, it's going to be a vital piece of equipment that we're going to have for the city.
Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? And as you stated, looking before us, of the bids that we have, this is the lowest bid. We budgeted $80,000, but the $47,750 is the lowest of the...
That's correct.
...of the ones that, that we're able to bid on it, that had the, the crane package.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt Resolution R-66-19.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move on to Resolution Number R-67-19.
A resolution authorizing the lease of portions of 8620 North County Road 25A.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes, we're asking approval for the amendment of the contract with ATM Investors, that's the current Russo building out on 25A, which is the building that Underground Utilities now is, we call Home. And we have currently three separate areas that we occupy in that building. If you would look at the exhibit, which is an aerial photograph of that complex, you'll see that Area 1 is currently the, the offices for management, and Area 3 is actually the section where we have light trucks, inventory, and that's where the employees are, that's typically where they report to, clock in, their break room, that sort of thing. So what we're asking tonight is to add an additional 300 square feet, which would be actually Area 2, which will allow us to have a corridor that would give us access from the offices to the employees area slash work area. And then also, there is another office in Area 1 that's a part of that 300 square foot also. Given that we're separated, it allows a breakdown in communication for the employees, because they, it's not easily accessible back and forth, so it would definitely aid us in that. And then the additional office would be for the Assistant Superintendent of Underground Utilities.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions or comments of the commission on this resolution?
How much are we paying for this building, monthly?
I believe it's 3,700, I believe, is what the total comes out to.
No, for all the pieces? Is it 3,700 for all the different areas?
That's correct. Well, that would, currently, it's 3,400.
3,400.
But with the additional, it would be 37. It's 3,400 currently.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else from the commission?
And I might add that the reason that they are in this location is that previously they were in the nuclear plant, and of course, that is undergoing quite a transition, and it would be too, it was too cost prohibitive for us to go back in there after the Department of Energy completely strips that facility, and they are trying to decide what the future of that, which may include demolition of the whole facility, so... But it was just too, it was cost prohibitive for us to go back into that facility, so we looked at for alternative place to locate them until sometime in the future, when we figure that out.
Anything else? Any questions or comments from the public on this res- Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution number R-67-19.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-68-19.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Game Time DWA Recreation, Inc. for the purchase of a playground structure for Pittsburgh Park.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes, after meeting with the park board and reviewing new playground equipment options for Pittsburgh Park from different manufacturers, we agreed on and would like to purchase a new playground structure and swing unit for Pittsburgh Park from Game Time DWA Recreation Corporation. The playground equipment is competitively bid through OMNIA, formerly U.S. Communities, a cooperative purchasing group we are a part of. Game Time will help us gain national recognition for our commitment to building our community through play and recreation. There are five national demonstration site designations awarded by their parent company, Play Corps. These designations recognize communities that develop play and recreation areas based on design and usage best practices. Qualifying sites like ours receive certification signage and are added to a national database, vigorously promoted in regional and national publications, and presented as best practice examples in outreach and educational seminars. Our signage will state, "This play-on playground has been designated as a project of excellence for meeting best practices in youth fitness through sliding, swinging, spinning, climbing, bracheting, and balancing." Game Time will send representatives to do a ribbon cutting with staff, commission, park board, and local media, if desired, to showcase this new play area in Pickwa. We budgeted $80,000 for the expenditure of the playground equipment, and the total cost will be $79,339.65. Upon approval, this will be scheduled for installation later this year.
Mr. Brookhart, Brookhart, this is going to Pittsburgh, correct?
That is correct.
Where in Pittsburgh is it going? Because I know people are going to ask that.
We, we have, we have a small playground structure that is out toward the front of McKinley Avenue. It's an accessible unit, and it will go next to that unit.
I figure, as a, having served on the park board, I know that's been the plan for quite some time, to move everything to that area, which I think is wonderful, because that keeps all of the children playing, those that are using that special needs area, then also this, which will be behind it. So, I just wanted to make sure that citizens knew that it was all going to be in that one area.
Do you have pictures available for the, we don't, we don't have anything on the slide?
I don't have anything up for the slides tonight. Sorry, if anybody would like to see it.
Yeah, more than welcome, can, can check it out. It looks pretty nice. I'm impressed, so.
Okay, I know people will be very happy. A lot of people have been asking about this. And I know that, you know, one of the reasons we've had to remove a lot of our playground, our playground equipment is because it has not been safe. And so, we're now trying to get some equipment out there that obviously is first class, so.
Yes.
Excellent. Any, any other questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution?
My name is Ruth Kuhn, and I live on Park Avenue. I want to make sure that we thank Edna Stifel for championing, championing this project. She has asked for a couple of years for this playground equipment, and I thank Chris Lee for moving this forward, and I certainly hope that all of you will agree that this is going to be wonderful for the children, especially, I think it's going to be just fantastic. But thank you to Edna Stifel for making sure this happened.
I agree, I agree. As I said, having served on the park board with her, that she was pushing for this for a long time, so.
Yes, and I talked to her today, and she's just thrilled that this is going to happen, so, thank you, everybody.
It's a win for our community and a win for our children, so, yes, thank you. Excellent. Any other comments about this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-69-19.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, resolution number R-68-19. So, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-69-19.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Kenworth of Dayton Palmer Trucks for the purchase of two Kenworth 2020 T-370 municipal snowplow trucks, including snow removal equipment.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. After demoing municipal snowplow trucks from various manufacturers, we requested a quote for two new 2020 Kenworth T-370 dump trucks from Kenworth of Dayton. These trucks are competitively bid through the Sourcewell Program contract. The trucks will be built exactly like the Kenworth truck that we purchased last fall, as you can see in Exhibit A. The truck will have a five-year, 100,000-mile bumper-to-bumper warranty, and then a seven-year, 200,000-mile basic vehicle warrant, warranty. We are looking to replace two of our current 2005 Freightliner dump trucks with these two trucks. The trucks will be fully equipped with a snowplow, salt box, and pre-treatment side-mounted tanks. Each truck cost $168,650. We budgeted $350,000 for the expenditure. The two trucks will cost $337,300, coming in under budget.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
Will we trade any other trucks in?
No, we will hang on to those two trucks. I have two older trucks than that, that we currently use for leaf removal and pickup. We are going to take those two trucks out of service. We will take these two trucks and use them exclusively just for leaf pickup.
Any other questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Not, do we have any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution R-69-19.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-70-19.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Buckeye Ford for the purchase of three 2019 Ford F-250 pickup trucks.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes. In April of 2019, the purchasing analysis went out to bid for pickup trucks, sending specifications to several companies. The bids were received back in April 23rd of 2019, and a bid tabulation is shown in Exhibit A. Buckeye Ford has the lowest price for us to purchase three 2019 F-250 pickup trucks. We are replacing three 1998 or older pickup trucks that have rendered their useful service life. The trucks will be used for street and sign maintenance. We budgeted $120,000 for the trucks. The total expenditure for the trucks will be $84,069.72. Each truck will cost $28,023.24, and these came in under budget as well.
Okay, thank you. And we do have a bid tabulation sheet, which is part of the agenda packet. There were five people, or five companies that bid on this.
Yes, and one being our local dealer, Paul Sherry's, bid on the trucks as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, are these diesel trucks?
Uh, no, they're gas, like our other current pickup trucks.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Do you have any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-70-19.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to, on to resolution number R-71-19.
A resolution to levy assessments to pay for the cost of nuisance abatements.
Ms. Welker will provide the staff report.
Thank you. This is the third and final installation of nuisance assessments for this taxing period. Each year, the city abates nuisance conditions on properties for things such as mowing grass, cleaning up trash and debris, trimming trees, various other maintenance issues that are in violation of city ordinance. What happens is, property owners are notified of the code violation, given a timeframe to correct that violation. If they fail to do so, the city hires contractors to clean up or mow or correct that violation. The cost of that work, along with administrative fees and penalties, are then charged back to the property owner. If they fail to pay that cost, then it shows up here before you to be sent to the county auditor to be placed on property taxes. This is all according to our city ordinance, and these assessments will be added to the, to previous rounds that you've already approved and will be sent to the county auditor. They're due to them the first working Monday in September.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
Yeah, for the price of this, you would think they would just go have somebody mow the yards for them. Because this is a whole lot more expensive than getting somebody to do yard work for you.
Yeah, most of it's, there's some, there's some trash, but most of it is grass issues. Alright, any other questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Do you have any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-71-19.
Wait a sec. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to the public comment portion of the meeting. Do we have any public comments this evening?
My name is Bill Johnkew. And I really came up here with a whole different agenda tonight. And I've always had just a real, just sort of a, when it comes to cops, and, you know, I just sort of, you know, I can go one way or I can go the other way. And, you know, Chris and I have gone at it a couple times. As a matter of fact, I, you know, I got a DUI from Chris one time. And, but I'm going to yield a minute of my time to Chris, and I'm just so touched by these cops, and I don't want to choke up here, that just rushed into the gunfire down there in the Oregon District. I'm just stunned at that. I just have never seen such a, I'm just, you know, that will forever change my mind on what you guys do. So, I'm, I'd just like to yield a moment to you. Would you say something about that?
I lived in Dayton for five years, and, so Dayton's always going to be special to me. And if you, if you notice, if you watched any of the coverage, five of those officers got on the job in 2016. And the other one was hired in 1997. And they didn't hesitate, they were on patrol in that area, they went straight to the threat, just like our officers here in Pickwa do each and every day. And so, we're lucky to have professional officers that will do that, and Dayton's very lucky, and I want to stand and strong with them and resolute with them as well. So, thank you for bringing this up.
And I really came up here with a whole different agenda, and I've just been so moved by that, that I'm going to drop what I was going to say tonight, just in the interest of that. And I'm going to come back and give you guys some hell next time.
Thanks.
Thank you, thanks. Any other public comment this evening?
We have very 406 West High Street. I just am a little concerned about the intersection at Main Street and High Street, right in front of 311 and the gazebo right there. If you're heading down Main Street, going towards Ash, and you would like to make a left turn, you know, to head towards the library, if you can picture it in your head, sorry. There is just enough room to the right on that side of the street, so, for people heading towards Ash, that they can go around you while you're stopped waiting to turn left. And I've had several instances where I've been stopped there waiting to do that, and somebody coming from the opposite direction sees me stopped, thinks that they can turn left to head towards Wyandens, only to get caught off by the person coming around me. So I don't know what can be done about it, but it's just not a very safe situation. And it's not like that coming from the other side of the street, there's not enough room to do that, it's just that one side. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, so maybe you could think about it and see what we could do to make it a little bit safer for everybody.
Thank you. I know that also, I get very concerned about people crossing the street there, and at that same place, if they're crossing the street and that person's coming around you and doesn't see somebody in the crosswalk, that could be another issue as well. I mean, crossing the street...
Which I have seen that once before, too.
Yeah, crossing the street, sometimes, I mean, you really, you step out in that traffic, you need to make sure. I mean, they're supposed to yield to you, but I would say that probably 90% of the time that I step out, because I, I get very frustrated, they don't yield to you.
Yeah, they don't. I know, I know putting stops, I mean, stop signs were suggested in my head, but I know that that would make it extremely congested between the two stoplights, you know, on the opposite streets, but, I don't know, just, just something to think about.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
Again, I'm Ruth Kuhn, I live on Park Avenue, but I'm here this evening representing friends of the Pickwa Parks. And I'm so happy and excited to tell you that our organization is going to start the renovation and re-landscaping of the two slopes on East Route 36. It will begin prob, well, there are stakes out there today, and it looks, going to look just wonderful. We hope to complete that in mid-October. And also, we have had a very, very successful fundraiser for that project. We have raised almost $80,000. And we want to thank the community, businesses, as well as foundations for helping us with that project. So, we're looking for great changes there at that entrance to our city. And speaking of entrances to our city, I've spoken to Brian Brookhart about the entrance sign on South County Road 25A. There is a Pickwa sign, but the weeds around the sign are terrible. I am not by any means downgrading our wonderful crew that we have for our parks and recreation and our street department. But I think we have to take more priority in our community and more, to be thinking about how we, visibly, we are looking to our, to our residents as well as to guests. And that, that sign needs to be really maintained better. The other entrance is across the street, of course, from our beautiful cemetery, and that is the deplorable condition of those trailers. And I wondered if I could ask Mr. Patrizio, if we could use eminent domain at all in that situation.
The trailers are not in Pickwa. They're outside of Pickwa. Mr. Schmiesing, who's not here tonight, met with some county officials, and they're looking at trying to remedy that.
You know, it's been going on for so, so long that we really need to step it up and, and see if we could get something done, and I'm not putting you on the spot about that. But we do have a beautiful cemetery, that's a beautiful entrance to our community, and then you look to the left and, as you're coming into Pickwa, and it is deplorable. So, if we could all just be, you know, we are investing a lot in our community downtown and around, but we need to really make sure that when people enter our community, it looks really, really well-maintained. So, thank you, and we're looking for great things at Route 36.
I'll just comment on the trailer park on 66, that as Frank referred to, we did have a meeting with county representatives there last week. It's been a frustrating thing to deal with over the years, with dealing with, it got into problems with EPA and was shut down. And as a result, what we found is the county doesn't have any regulations that control blight. So, that's an issue that we're trying to get them to resolve, because it is in the county, and they do have, they're the ones that would have to take action against it. So, there are, and it was the city of Pickwa that initiated all this meeting, to try to push it again. Same thing exists on Covington with the old McDonald's and play, the shopping, the shopping center there, the old shopping center, that's not in the city either. And same situation there, is trying to get some resolution on that from, we need the county's help to actually enforce cleaning that up.
Well, I do remember that location where the old Kmart was and where the old McDonald's... restaurant. I did call the owner of that mall, and they have really stepped up. I mean, it looks 100% better.
They've done, they've done better.
They have really done better. Of course, you take your life in your hands driving over the parking lot because you could get lost in one of those holes. So, well, I think the thing is about this trailer situation, though, it's just dragging on. So, there isn't, it would not be wise for us to take that on ourselves as far as.
You have to have a purpose for eminent domain. It's not as though you can just...
Well, don't you think we have a good purpose, though, to...
That's up to the city officials. And I mean, I, if, if the city asks me to file an eminent domain action, I suppose I could do it. I have to look at the law and make sure that we can do it for the proper purpose.
Can you look into that, Gary, to see if that would be anything you might want to...
Well, I think you want to give the county an opportunity to clean this up because we, we take the property and we own all the junk that's there. And that's a tremendous cleanup cost.
The county can't do eminent domain, can they?
Well, they can. But I don't know that they want it. They just want it cleaned up. So.
Yeah, they want somebody else. Yeah. Isn't that typical, want somebody else to do it? Well, anyway, if we could get going on that, I think that would be great. I also want to thank Gary for his help, his great help and support with the Friends of the Pickwa Parks with getting this project underway. I think it's going to be beautiful for our community. And one of the major donors for that project was our new wonderful Kettering Health Network, because they're going to have a facility out there. And we sold them on the idea that we need to make that intersection look great for them also. So, thank you for listening and be in tune with what's going on out there.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much, Ruth. Any other public comment this evening? If not, we will move to our city manager's report.
No report tonight.
Okay, and we will start with Commissioner Martin, then.
Keep it simple. I would like to thank all the volunteers that helped with all the things that go on in the city of Pickwa. Because without them, a lot of this would not get done. That's it.
Commissioner Lee.
Well, it is National Night Out. So, when you're done here, if you've got time and can run to one of the celebrations, try and stop out. I want to welcome Logan Welbaum. He's the new officer. He'll have a good time. I know I did. And much needed to the city of Pickwa. Again, I want to welcome Chris Grissom to the commission, Fourth Ward. He's going to do great. I'm looking forward to working with him. And just a moment, Bill stole my thunder a little bit, but I was going to talk about El Paso and Dayton, especially Dayton, because I lived there for five years. And I just want everybody to have those cities in your prayers, and the people who lost lives and their families. Dayton is strong. I currently work just outside of Dayton. I go daily. But they're resolute and they're strong. And those officers did a wonderful job. And they went straight to the threat. It was, it was amazing. And to see it on, on the camera or on film was, was something else. So, but just have your prayers for both those cities and the families. And that's all I, oh, school's about to start. So, let's watch out for the kiddies. And if you're not ready, get ready. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Grissom.
I don't want to encourage on that too much. I just, this is my first official meeting, so I really appreciate everybody and really look forward to working with each and every one of you and for our citizens.
All right, thank you.
Just, I have a few announcements, just reminders for people. Talking about Dayton, I will, and I did share this on my mayor's page on Facebook and I, on Twitter today as well. There has been a heroic nurse that has been mentioned in the news, who was a resident of our community, Kayla Miller. You might remember back in February, we gave her a proclamation because she did the same thing in our Walmart parking lot in December, where she provided CPR for a citizen and helped to save their life there. She has well responded to numerous people in Dayton during the horrific things that happened there and was also performing CPR. I know that she was on NBC Nightly News and the Today Show. So, do want to just say, you know, a huge thank you to Kayla for providing that heroic, heroic response to that horrible tragedy in Dayton. Also, just want to let our brothers and sisters in Dayton know that we have been thinking about them. I know everybody in this community has had them in our hearts and prayers. I reached out to Nan Whaley, who is the mayor there, and to let her know that we have been thinking about her and her community. So, continue to hold our brothers and sisters there in our thoughts and prayers. And again, we do give thanks for those police officers and the ways that they were able to respond so quickly. You guys are talented. You put your life in the way to save our citizens time and time again. And for that, we give you all much thanks. So, thank you. Also, reminder that we have a government academy, which is starting up. I actually was part of a government academy quite a few years ago before I ever thought that I would run for city commission. This one will begin on Monday, September 9. It is every Monday evening at 6:00 PM for 11 weeks. It's a great, great way to learn about the city, how things function. You get to look at different departments and different things that are happening here in the city. And there's information on the city website. There's information in the city manager's office if you want to pick up an application and apply and to apply and to be part of that academy. I really encourage citizens to do so. And it's interesting, with all the conversations we've been having over the past months around utilities, there's quite a people, few people who have been at our commission meetings, and we've been talking to them. And they're now interested in going into, through the government academy to get a little more idea of how the city works. So, I encourage all of our citizens to look into that. Also, just to remind people, I have my next read with the mayor, which is the last one. Hard to believe that we're at the end of the summer, which will be this Monday at Fountain Park at 10 o'clock. So, I encourage all of our kids, if they want to come, and I'll read three books to them. And that will be part of their summer reading program for school. I'd love to see them there. Also, Down a River, Down a Beer is this coming Saturday downtown, just actually it's behind, oh, it's at the old power plant this year. We moved it because of the construction in Lock Nine. So, we will have that event there. And I think there probably are tickets still available for it as well. I'll be welcoming our new teachers on Thursday at a new teacher lunch for this Pickwa City Schools. So, we have quite a few new teachers here in our communities and new educators and administrators. And so, we do welcome them here to our community. Bike Pickwa will have their next slow roll this coming Monday at 6:00. And you can look on the Bike Pickwa Facebook page for more information about that. Also, our next Rock Pickwa is the 17th, Saturday, the 17th. And again, it will be at Canal Place behind Suzie's and Can't Stop Running. So, another great event here in the city of Pickwa. And as Commissioner Lee mentioned, believe it or not, school's starting before our next commission meeting on the 19th, or about two weeks away, which as a parent, I'm kind of excited about. But I'm also sad because I'm not ready for the summer to be over. But we are thinking about our students and our teachers and staff and faculty that all are getting ready to go back to school here in our community. So, remember that as the buses start rolling, especially in the morning. I think that is, oh, just for announcement, we do have a, a joint work session coming up with the Pickwa City Commission and the Troy City Council. It's a public meeting that will be held this Thursday at the Hobart Arena in the Bravo Room at 6:00. It is a low dam public meeting, and both of our commission and the Troy Council will be there as well to continue to talk about the low dam on our river. So, just wanted to make an announcement about that. And I think that is all I have. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.